Like to call to order the, excuse me, July meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Been asked to make sure that when anyone speaks that you please make sure your microphone is turned on because we are zooming this. And we want to make sure that everything is heard. And otherwise, I think we're good. Director over there, I can't see you, but we're all good. All right. It's a new experience for us all here, so. It's nice to see everybody together. It's been a while since we've been back in here. And it feels good. Looks a little different, but it feels very good. We have. Four members present, so based on that, we need three votes. Either way, it has to have at least three votes for something to pass. Three out of the four will take care of it tonight. Next item, approval of the minutes from our June first Zoom meeting. So we had a copy. We have a motion to approve them as written. Support, support. All in favor, I.
I.
Pose a minutes approved as written. New business items. The first one is for 109 West Beecher Street. We have someone to speak to that. If you'd like to please step up to the microphone there. I don't know if that would need to be turned on or if that one's on already.
Is it on?
Yep. Give us your name and kind of give us a little overview of what we're looking at.
Okay, I'm Mel Lewis. Been a long time since I've been to the meetings here. Been working with Glenn Preston since when he started the job. Anyways, we're, we, I wasn't able to find the law because I'm really stupid when it comes to computers on what was gone, but. Mr. Claimant and Glenn have talked, we've talked to email, so. I'm in violation for parking in the front. Now that particular house has a small driveway. There's not much parking, parking for two cars. And ever since that left turn lane was put in. The people who owned it before and all the tenants have parked in the front yard. It's not every night, every day, but. That's, it's been used that way ever since then because there's just room for two cars. There's a really small backyard. It's not accessible without going across the neighbor's property. And it's my understanding that the neighbor and. My tenant don't get along and I don't know the neighbor, but it's fenced in yard for their kids anyway. So the only place there is to park is two on the, would be the east side of the house. And the, there's three people with cars living there at this point. And the. Again, they, my tenant, anyway, the, the man works at a company that services wells and pumps. And they're on call at night, so he sometimes has to bring his work truck home. So by parking in the front yard, it, it is very necessary because of the small area there. And when I first got notified I was in violation, I tried to call Glenn a couple of times. And before I say more about Glenn Preston, I have the utmost respect for that man. We've, we've had some differences in the past. We've always come to an agreement. And so I believe everything that he would say to me and, and I have respect for him, so. But I did call him and he didn't get back with me. And I know he's busy, so I called again and said, well. I was under the impression, the reason we couldn't park in the front yard was because it didn't have the proper surface. Like should be stoned or something like that. So I left a voicemail for Glenn. And said that I was gonna put stone or something in that front yard to make it the proper surface. And if there was a problem, get back with me, which he didn't. And, and again, I'm not putting any blame on Glenn. But anyways, so I was, I felt that that was okay. So we went ahead and put some millings in there and packed them down and, and made that a hard surface. And the, and the front of the house there. And then Mr. Claimant, I believe sent me a notice after that. I don't have my notes in front of me. I left them all. But anyways, that wasn't what was supposed to have been done. So that's why we're here now. I just want permission to leave it like we have it. Let people park in the front yard when they need to. I'm not gonna say it's gonna be every night, but I'm not, not gonna say it won't be every night either. So I don't want any, you know, misunderstandings. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have and, you know, I just, I thought we were doing okay, but.
One, one question I had, is that a multi-unit?
No, it is not. It's a single family, four bedroom.
Mr. Lewis, there's a, there's a garage on the property.
Pardon me?
There's a garage at the end of the driveway.
There's a garage at the back end of the driveway.
Yeah.
And so if they put something in the garage, then they've got to move cars around a lot to get it out. And they've got, and but they, yeah.
It is at my house.
Yeah, but, but they, they do have their garage full of junk and that's nobody's concern here, but they had some outside. And, you know, I told them, we can't have stuff outside. And in fact, I think Glenn mentioned that to me, that they had too much stuff outside. But yes, there is a, there's a garage there that's. When it was built, it was like for the Model As and stuff like that. So it's a pretty small garage. My Lincoln Navigator would not fit in there, but my wife's Avenger probably would. Actually, the Navigator serves, I'm sorry. But anyways, if, if a small car would fit in the garage, yes, it would.
Commissioners, other questions?
Could we talk?
Make sure you talk to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we handling the different violations separately? Should we talk now about the siding?
So this, this.
The only thing we're dealing with is the parking.
Correct.
Period.
Period.
Okay, thank you.
Now I want to point out for the board that although the. Appellant has made arguments as though he's requesting a variance, this is not a request for variance. This is an appeal. And yet, in that it's an appeal, it's a contention that the code officer has not correctly interpreted or enforced the ordinance, so that, so that's the question before you tonight.
Anything? My, my observation, looking at the site.
Yeah.
Yeah, was that. You know, there is a long, narrow, I should say, narrow driveway. You could probably put two cars side by side, can't you, in that driveway?
Can you fit them in there? Probably. But with that fence on the neighbor's side there, we just don't have enough width there. Could you put, probably two car, two small cars might be able to. If you leave it up in front of where the house is, where you're not, because you get between the house and that fence, you cannot. But up in front of the house, which becomes front yard again, I mean, it's still driveway, but it'd be in front of the house, then two will fit there. I was up there last night and I tried that. And you can't put them side by side there.
Okay, that, that's kind of a question that I have, I guess, because what, the driveway that's in front of the house, that's okay to park the car? I mean.
Well, so the zoning ordinance really doesn't contemplate that. That's not. Something that's ever made an issue of, but the rule is that you can't park in the front yard. Now, if it's, if, if it's a simp, simply a driveway, we, you know, we view that as, it's a temporary situation. The driveway is the way to get to the parking space. It's, that's a different matter than what prevails here, which is, you know, that they've created a permanent parking space in the front yard that is not.
Understand, I just kind of, in reading the ordinance, it was like.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's true everywhere. I mean, this is a very common rule and zoning ordinances, almost universal, I would say.
Yeah.
You know, the driveway is just considered, you know, it's a temporary activity as you, you're supposed to be getting on your way to the parking spaces that are. Outside of the front yard area and ultimately, in most cases, the garage back there.
The way I've put it now, it's a nice place for them to back in, turn around, so they don't have to back on the Beecher Street too. It's kind of a safety thing there, so.
How does our, I'm sorry, how does our ordinance handle a circle drive in the front yard?
We don't allow them, although some people have.
Yep, right.
Put in in the past mistakenly, like, I think the last one was three years ago.
Do we make them, tear them out?
We have not.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, mine actually went in recently, so, you know, that's different, different situation.
But one other thing I would add that's germane to this topic is that we, we do have residents come in from time to time who don't. You happen to have more cars than they have legitimate places to park. And we have residential parking permits and those could now, that may be not be an option on Beecher. But we have residential parking permits that we issue for that circumstance, so that they can be on the street longer than they otherwise would be.
It strikes me that the ordinance, with the exceptions of the things we just discussed, is pretty clear and that the enforcement officer has correctly interpreted it.
Yes.
I drove around both Beecher, in the general area where this property is, and I drove up and down State Street and Dennis Street. And up and down Erie, not Erie Street, but Clinton and. Generally, on the close east side. This was the only house I found with a car parked in the front yard. Um, if it was next to my house, I wouldn't like.
In this particular case, the neighbor actually parked his front yard too. Well, so, I mean, and that, and that doesn't mean that I'm okay. And I'm not trying to justify because somebody else. But there are a lot of people around town that do park in the front yards. And I, and I understand that that's, that's not a great thing. Most places have a little more room to park than what this house does. And that's, that's why we're here.
This is the reason we have setbacks required so that people don't build porches and decks right out to the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And, and having a parking space right next to the sidewalk is kind of the same thing, especially when it's occupied.
Yeah, this particular house is about, I believe, fifteen or eighteen feet from the sidewalk to the house. So it's, you know, it's, there's, there's not, not a lot of room there.
My understanding is right.
Microphone picture.
It's on. If all three cars are in the driveway. Then there's not a violation?
That's my understanding.
Or, or in the garage, it, it looked to me like there was a derelict car parked in the garage. Without license plates, a blue sedan of some kind.
I don't know what they've got in the garage now, but I know they had a lot of junk around there for a while. And Glenn called me.
My point being is that there could be space for three cars if there wasn't one that didn't run stored in the garage.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know what's in the garage. I.
It was open when I go by and there was a kind of a beat up blue.
Okay.
Car without plates on it.
Well, I'm glad you told me that because he, he races the demolition derby. I told him that car's not to be around where somebody can see it because that does not make neighbors happy. It doesn't make. And by the way, I know the neighbor right directly behind us, Mrs. Horn, and she's a fantastic lady. In fact, I talked to her last night. I've known her since I was a kid, so. But.
But it, it seems like the enforcement officer has done his job.
Well, that's, that's, you know, that's kind of more, I mean, not necessarily thrilled by the. The, yeah, the way it turns out, but as far as following the ordinance and for what you're appealing.
Yeah.
You know, he has followed the ordinance.
Yeah.
Just like, like if you just put cars nose to tail in that driveway, how many cars do you think you could get in there?
Well, let's see. I should have brought my measure. I just measured up for siding because Glenn and I had a talk about some repairs to the house. We're gonna do some siding instead of what he wanted, but. If, I believe you could put two of them between the garage and. I know you can put two between the garage and the sidewalk. I'm not sure three, but I know you can put two in there.
And like I said, there should be room for a third garage.
Yeah.
That sounds like. We, we have two things going on here, the appeal, but also a solution would be three cars in a row.
Right, right.
I don't believe three cars in a row would go between the sidewalk. If they put one in the garage, then yes, we could.
One in the garage and two in.
And then two, two beside the house.
I do agree that it appears that the. By the violation occurred, that the rule is pretty clearly written and that it was violated. I would like to say, well, I have a microphone in front of my face, that. Many, many cities have eliminated the rules against on-street parking and it might be something for us to think about also.
On Beecher, I'm pretty sure there's not room, in fact, not, no park, there's no parking on either side of the street there. Because it's got a central lane for left turns.
Okay.
So, you may, you may have a, you do have a good point.
Okay.
And when I put this, these millings on the front yard, I thought I was doing okay, but, you know, and I've discovered since then that that was not what, I should have been here. Asking somebody first, I guess, you know. I've had some discussion with Glenn and again, I like Glenn, he's a great guy and, and we have always come to agreements on what we're doing.
Do we have anyone else to speak on this? Just, I'm curious. I know some notices are probably sent out to other people. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Well, what we have before us is appeal of the. Decision. On the parking and. I'm kind of sensing where we're going, but I guess I need a motion here to make our decision. I.
I would move to, to deny the appeal.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
Second.
We have support. Any questions or discussions on the motion? The motion is to deny the appeal. I'll have roll call vote, please.
Jacobitz.
Support.
Beely.
Support.
Berg.
Support.
Berthold.
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Can't say I'm thrilled by it, but.
Well, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, we, it's, you know, it's the, the rules and we gotta go by them and. And I respect that. I respect all you people with what you do and especially Glenn. I like Glenn.
We try.
Yeah. Now, is there a. Like a variance to the thing that we could do or is something like that? I mean.
So you could apply for the variance. We just wouldn't be able to do that tonight.
Yeah, I know you can't do it tonight.
Notice that variance, but you.
Yeah.
Could apply for a variance.
Okay.
And that's something we could discuss if you want to call me tomorrow.
Okay.
We can talk about.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe also just see if there's room for like a, maybe, I don't know, you know, we were looking at there are a couple of other spots to put a car or something. It may have to go three line. I know. My driveway's narrow. My wife drives cars or back to those and one has to back out if the other one wants to go.
Yeah.
But I'm not on Beecher Street either, so.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing here is when he has to bring his truck home for, from work, because he's on twenty-four hour call and that.
Hopefully something can get worked out here. I'm sure we're working with Glenn.
Yeah, yeah, I'll work with them.
Thank you, sir.
And I want to thank all of you for hearing me and I want to thank Glenn even though he's not here.
He's back there.
Oh, is he?
Online.
Oh, all right. Okay. Anyways, thanks a lot. I appreciate your time and I'll talk to Mr. Claimant.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is twelve twenty-five North Main Street, temporary use food trailer and structure. And I'm assuming we have someone to speak as they're walking towards the microphone. So please, just tell us your name, please, and what exactly we're looking at here.
Tom Jacobowski, twelve twenty-five North Main. Yeah, it's Jake's Smokehouse. All we're doing is, all we're asking for basically is, our restaurant is not open right now. We're in the process of. Getting it there. It takes a while. We're still trying to work on all the stuff for our permanency about. So we're just asking for, we're doing online. We don't have a, a real good method of delivering goods because we can't have people inside right now. We're at zero occupancy. So we're asking to put a trailer out there. We have a full mobile kitchen trailer that we use for, you know, corporate events and things like that, weddings. And we just like to put that outside to do our. When people order online, they won't be walking up. It won't be a regular food truck. It'll just be online orders only. And that's all we're asking for.
So you don't have a kitchen inside the building currently?
I'm sorry?
You don't have a kitchen inside that, is this?
Oh, we do.
Kitchen?
Oh, no, we, it is a, it is a full mobile kitchen. And when we had it at our other location over on Lommy, we used that as our smoker. That's where we were smoking all our meats.
The building itself right now does not have an operating kitchen.
It does.
Okay.
It does. We're not open inside for dining.
So are you going to, is this going to be for outside dining? I mean, are people, are you gonna have tables and chairs set up?
No, no, this is just, we're strictly carryout. You come in, get your food and leave.
So I'm not, so we've got a kitchen inside the building.
I do have a kitchen inside.
And you've got a drive-through window.
We do.
I'm not quite sure what the purpose of this stuff is.
Well, the online, for the online orders.
Yeah.
You have to be able to deliver that food to people. They can't come into the building to do it.
Yeah.
It's the, any type of a curb site is really unfeasible where we are right now. So we're, we've got the ability to do the trailer outside where people just, their orders will all be filled out there. And people just walk up to the trailer, get their orders and leave.
Okay.
Where they won't be able to come inside.
Tent, then, and what's the purpose of the tent?
The tent was just for special events. I was talking with Jeremiah. He said, you know, put it on there. It's. To keep you from having to go back through this process again in the future if you wanted to have a, a special event out there or something. But the, the tent is not a, the tent is cumbersome to put up and take down and we're only open four days a week, so. It's a, it's really, the tent is a.
So if I, if I call in an order, or if I order online. And you tell me it's gonna be ready in twenty minutes.
Yes.
Then you prepare my food inside the building?
Inside or out in the kitchen. The, the food is already prepared. We just serve up.
Oh, okay. So when I arrive, I will do what?
For an online order, park, go up to the trailer, get your online order and leave.
Okay.
It's already prepaid. There's no cash or anything out there. We're not using it as a food truck. It's just a method of delivery.
Tom, I'm not trying to give you too hard of a time here, but it's not clear to me why we can't use the, the drive-up window that's in the building.
We can. It's just it, it ties up the drive-through. And with lunch, it becomes very, very cumbersome. We've lost all of our onlines because. People usually only have twenty to thirty minutes to come in and, and get their food. And what we're getting is really long lines during lunch and people are turning away.
So they, they won't be coming to the trailer to order and place an order?
No.
Everything's gonna be pre-done there. Once the building's done, how are you planning on handling that? Then they'll be able to just come inside and pick up the order?
They'll be able to come inside and we'll handle that at the front counter.
Okay, now I'm starting to get a little clearer.
Yeah, no.
I was having a little trouble following it.
No, it's, that's fine.
And this is meant to be temporary. Do you have any idea?
Six months.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not.
Yeah, probably won't even be that long. Once the weather gets cold, I can't really have the trailer out there anyway because it'll freeze.
Part, not in the stuff from the city. Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I have a little clearer picture.
Yeah, we're probably, we're probably two months away from getting the interior done. So that's all, all we're trying to do is generate some revenue. Really what it comes down to is we can finish it off.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? Nobody's jumping up or, okay. So we are looking at a temporary use. Preparation, storage and delivery vehicle.
And a tent.
And a tent, I have it on the list there. So, I doubt there it is. What is, I guess, what is the temporary delivery vehicle? Is that just what we're talking about, this trailer being?
Yeah, the trailer.
Okay, so we're putting out all in the same idea. Okay. It's basically one place we're looking at.
I talked to Eric from the fire department. He was fine with it. I didn't put that in there for, but I can speak.
Okay.
And we've got permission from the, the Lenawee Health Department on it too.
And then. The tent. The tent is not gonna be temporary?
I'm sorry?
It has to be temporary as well.
Oh, it's temporary. It would never be up for more than four days at a time anyway. Those are the only days that we're open. I'm not gonna leave it out there. I'd have homeless sleeping there and.
Okay.
Five hundred cats.
All right, commissioners, any other questions before we go down the finding of fact? Hearing from Norway, we'll proceed down. We have a number of items here we need to go through. One, the temporary use permit is compatible with the various provisions of this chapter. Is a temporary storage kitchen would be compatible, not a problem there. Two, temporary use is reasonable use of land compatible with the general plan, land use designation, zone classification. B two, permit selling food. Obviously, that's why there's gonna be a restaurant there, so not a problem there. Number three, the temporary use will not impede reasonable use of land or orderly developed land in the immediate vicinity. There's not a problem there and nothing impedes. It's all on their own property. It's not causing any issue with anybody else. I don't see a problem there. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent uses, buildings or other structures. Once again, adjacent properties not gonna have any effect on them. Don't see a problem there, so finding yes for number four. Five, the temporary use will not endanger public health, safety and general welfare. It's compliant with all the guidelines. There's plenty of room. Like I said, fire departments are not a problem. Plenty of room to get vehicles through. Find, yes for number five. Number six, provisions for adequate traffic access circulated off-street park and pedestrian staff have been provided. Once again, it takes up a few parking spaces, but it's still plenty. And I'm, I'm sure it'd be happy if all those spaces were filled sometime, but not a problem there.
At least no one's going inside.
Number seven, that granting a temporary use permit is made subject to these conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Does not see this as a problem. Others can apply. And the recommendation would be approval upon the restaurant is ready to open, use parking spaces at which time the applicant should remove the temporary use structure and trailer. Find affirmative for our items and we have the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'm not ready to make a motion, but do we want some language in the motion that says more clearly when this will go?
I was going to move to approve the application with the stipulation that it extend until the restaurant, until the building is ready to be open.
Oh, that's fine.
Six months, whichever comes first.
Okay, that's fine.
The earliest though.
That's a form of motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have support?
I'll support that.
Okay, any questions, commissioners, on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Eli?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Berg?
Support.
Berthold?
Support.
Motion carried unanimously.
All set.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
We have no old business. I did have a question for new, new business, but I found out we already moved our September date to September fourteenth. I had a question on that. Trying to make some plans for myself, but so, in case you don't have it down, our September meeting will be September fourteenth. Okay.
Do we anticipate an August meeting? Do you know yet?
Yeah, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
One item is a great note.
Okay. Any public comments for the zoning board? Madam Mayor, anything you wish to say or anything? No? Okay, well, just wanted to give you a chance, you know, so. Hearing none, zoning board meeting will be adjourned and planning commission will begin in a few minutes. Thank you.
Why didn't I get moved?
Were you checking to see if you were on the right seat? Oh, I was checking already.
Folks, we will call to order the July thirteenth regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda is a roll call. If we could have that, please.
Jacobitz?
Here.
Love?
Present.
Weatherby?
Present.
Johnson? Watson?
Present.
Taylor?
Present.
Cotton?
Here.
Gaus? All members aside from Johnson are present.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes from the June first meeting. Commissioners, I believe you had, I'll have a copy of those minutes and have had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the June minutes? If they're hearing none, we will entertain a motion for their approval.
Move approval.
Support.
Taylor and Love? A
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Johnson?
Not here.
Watson?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gaus?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Minutes are approved, thank you. Next item on our agenda is a consideration of a proposed amendment, amendment, amendments to the planning commission bylaws. Folks, I believe you have, you've already had copies of that, but if not, I believe there was also one included just today. And there are two proposed changes. One on item, let's see, Article ten, item six, that would limit public comment to three minutes per speaker. And if we are to pass that, I would suggest then that the following sentence be stricter. The one that says, however, the time allowed for each speaker. In the past, we've, rather than having a specific time limit, we said the time allowed for each speaker may be limited at the discretion of the chair. This sets up a specific time limit. Is there any discussion on that? Any comments?
At the city commission, when we hit the three-minute mark, doesn't the mayor have the discretion to?
Extend them?
Extend it?
Yeah.
And should we not have that here?
So maybe we should change that to say however, the time allowed for each speaker may be extended at the discretion of the chair?
I would like that better. If everybody else agrees.
The other change was one for, I thought, efficiency. As you know, in the past, our, our, our bylaws specified that all votes would be taken in the form of a rotating roll call conducted by the secretary. Your chair's preference has always been that things like setting a public hearing or adjournment or setting the agenda, things like that could be done by a simple voice vote. This change, this change would permit that.
Mr. Chair, are we going to be considering these separately or together?
Unless there's some objection, we could consider. Mr. Love or Dr. Love, what would you prefer? Do you think they're separate? Should they be?
I'd like to consider them separately.
Okay, then we can do that.
Yeah.
We can do that. Any discussion or questions or comments on that proposed change? Hearing none. Let's consider then Article ten, item six, a change in our bylaws to limit public comments to three minutes per speaker, which may be extended at the discretion of the chair. We would entertain a motion to adopt that change in the bylaws.
So move to adopt?
Taylor and Watson? Is there any additional discussion of that? Robert?
I personally have a huge problem with limiting public comment in any form during open meetings. I believe it's the right of the citizens to come and discuss as long as it's pertinent to whatever we're discussing for as long as they want. And I feel like the limiting of them for three minutes is not fair or just to them.
I, I agree, Bob, but you said it, you just said the reason why we put this in because we had an incident where the person was just going on and on about nothing that, nothing that
Well, then I, then I think we need to...
That's why the chair has a discretion to extend. I mean, we can, this person, you were at the meeting, I believe. He continued to ramble on about nothing, we have the power to take over or to do anything about. And when we tried to stop him.
I, I still, I know, but...
Saying, I don't like to limit either.
I, I also feel that if, if that's what it takes to make people feel like they're a part of this community and help them to take part in this and also to feel heard, then that's what it takes. And I don't, I don't feel like, as much as I feel stressed for time, I don't feel like I lost anything in that. And so that's, I just, I feel like if we're going to have an open public meeting, we need to have an open public meeting. I'd, I'd feel more comfortable if language said that the speaker may choose to, you know, limit people based on the subject of their speech, based on the content pertaining to the discussion area, but
And actually, we kind of covered that. I mean, it says that in there, it should be germane and
Then, then I don't, I don't know that we need a three-limit time limit.
And in, in partial, in partial support of what, what Robert has just said, you know, I'm perfectly, I'm perfectly capable of cutting someone off when they've gone too far.
I feel you've done a great job of it since I've been on this.
But I, I also don't want to, I'm sorry, I also want to become the I don't want to become the place where people come to ramble on because the city commission has already enacted their three-minute rule.
I, I think if we allow unlimited time, which I'm all in favor of in most cases, and I think that this does allow for unlimited time because it allows the chair to have discretion to continue, which he no doubt would in most all cases. I think if, if we allow it to be unlimited, then it has the potential to become confrontational. And that's just unpleasant and can escalate into something that is unfortunate. So I, I do kind of think that I'm not greatly in favor of cutting people off. But I'm not sure that I feel this does cut them off. I think it gives us more of a, of a guard against kind of the kinds of things that, that we have kind of confronted in the past. That's just me.
I would say I definitely am leaning more towards Brian's point of view as well. It just gives us a kind of jumping off point. And obviously, if they stay on topic and it's an important discussion, then we can keep going. But I agree with Nancy that it kind of gives you a way to stop any confrontation as well. So I am in agreement.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I've spoken many times in public comment. And you, you're hard pressed to go beyond three minutes, actually, if you know what you're going to talk about. The issue is, if we're talking about a particular issue and I have an opinion, I should be able to present that in three minutes or less. Where many times people get up and ramble on about that and everything else within the city. So I, I mean, I think
I'd like to tell you about my history here in the city.
Exactly right.
Yeah, I've lived on Broad Street for thirty-seven years.
We come to, we come to a meeting wanting to speak about an issue. We should have prepared ourselves to speak to that, knowing it's a three-minute. Or we can say to the chair, I'd like to have an extra minute, please, and if it's reasonable, you do it.
Yeah, I, I have extra motions about it. I don't like, I don't like the limit. I don't like it at the city commission level. I kind of objected to it when we put the, put the three-minute limit into place. I've thought in the past that now maybe it's five minutes better than three minutes. I, I mean, he's kind of, you look for the compromise. But I agree with Commissioner Taylor that if, if you have something to say and you prepare yourself to say it, then you can do, you can do it in three minutes. And I, but, you know, on the other hand, I agree with, with Bob. I don't just, I don't like limiting free speech. Now, we've had situations, most recently, I think, when we were talking about the changing the park hours and we had a lot of people and one or two of them wanted to go on and on and on. And the city attorney stepped in and said, okay, you're off point. As soon as you go off point, we shut you down. So a, and, and that's necessary. But the fact of the matter is you could go off point in a three-minute time period as well. And the chairman could say, okay, enough, I've heard enough, you're getting belligerent, whatever.
Get back on topic.
Right, so I, you know, I can support it at three minutes. I can support it probably even stronger, more strongly at five minutes. But I think you got to have some kind of limitation, again, recognizing the chairman does have the power to say, yeah, you know, I'm listening to what you got to say, you got a good point, and why don't you continue on with it? That's what I've got.
Folks, we have a motion on the floor in support for that motion to adopt this change to our bylaws. Adding the phrase, public comment shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. However, the time allowed for each speaker may be extended at the discretion of the chair. Any additional discussion? If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Gaus?
Yes.
Watson?
Support.
Weatherby? Cotton?
Yes.
Taylor?
Support.
Jacobitz?
Support.
Love?
No.
Motion passed six to one. Okay, thank you. The next item is, let's see, Article twelve, paragraph three, where we would scratch the phrase, all votes shall be taken in the form of a rotating roll call conducted by the secretary. I won't read that whole paragraph, you have it in front of you. It does allow that if any member of the planning commission shall question the outcome of such a voice vote at roll call as described previously, shall be used and shall be determining vote of the matter at hand. So a little backup. Any discussion on that item? General comments? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for its adoption.
I move to approve. Support.
Love and Taylor? Is there any additional discussion? Any comments? Nope. Okay, well, let's take a roll call vote then.
Watson?
Support.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gaus?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, very well. Next item on our agenda is case twenty-one oh twenty-three, private property food truck ordinance draft amendment. Folks, just as a little bit of background, and I may ask Jeremiah to jump in here if I don't have this correct. But if I understand correctly, back in May or June, the city commission adopted an ordinance, a new ordinance that would permit food trucks in town and regulated them. Folks need to get a permit from the, from the city clerk's office. But we don't have any zones that permit food trucks. And so the proposal from group of staff was permit food trucks in all non, pretty much in all non-residential districts. My reading of it is it's a use by right. I'm a little concerned that it's, is a use by right without any additional stipulations. And maybe we want to discuss that a little bit. It occurs to me that perhaps we need to have something in there that they need to be setback requirements? Or that there is some limitation on the hour. The hour's limitation is in the, the city commission's ordinance. A lot of it is covered there.
Right.
But I also, the other thing that there, there was not a time limit, per se, like we a little bit more background on this. This planning commission discussed this three or four years ago. We discussed it extensively and at the time concluded that, gee, we don't foresee that many of these ever coming forward. Why don't we just leave this to the ZBA as a temporary use issue? Well, then folks started to come into city hall saying, I want to have a food truck in my parking lot next week. Well, ZBA doesn't meet for another three weeks and they have to notice the meeting. And so it was taking, you know, three months to get a temporary use permit, which isn't practical for a lot of, so that's what prompted the city commission to act this ordinance. Really, my only question is, is do we want to put any other additional stipulations? Or do we want to make it simply permit by right in any non-residential districts on private property? With the understanding that there is a permitting process they still have to go through with the city clerk?
I would say for expediency's sake, I probably wouldn't add a whole lot to it on our end. I mean, if we wanted to, like you said, set hours or something like that, I have no issue with that.
The hours are
The hours are set.
My only, my, my concern, Kristo, was more of a, a time period. Like when, you know, when people come to the ZBA for a temporary use permit, they usually say, yes, and you can do this until this time, you know, you, you've got three weeks or you've got six months or you've got
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with, you know, like I said, further regulating things like that. But I would, I think the whole purpose from the city for this was to
Encourage.
Yeah, I mean, to speed it along a little bit, that way
I don't think a timeline was just needed.
No.
I mean, it's
Well, if one shows up in front of the IGA on a permanent basis, selling pizza, it's my parking lot.
But if they, if they
You're making no sense. Yeah, if it's my parking, if it's
But if they But if they continually go and get a new, another permit, what's the difference?
Yeah. So what's the permit say?
We, we allow for either daily permits or annual permits that you can get. And so the annual permit contemplates that you'd be able to park wherever in the legitimate space for the, for that year. And then the next year, you'd have to get another permit. I mean, the one stipulation we put in here is that it has to be excess legitimate excess parking spaces. So there's a required number of off-street parking spaces for any use. Only those properties where there's additional parking spaces that aren't needed for the principal use or would be eligible to have a food truck park in the extra parking spaces that they have. But if so, then, you know, we just view it as parking like any other vehicle as long as they've gone ahead and gotten their annual permit or their daily permit from the city clerk.
Of course, I could park it in the front yard.
Only if, in fact, the use allow, we don't allow parking in the front yard.
Well, that's in residential districts.
It, well, but it's, yeah, I mean, it's in the parking lot.
Jake could park one there from the Burger King.
Yes, he could. You know, if, if we've approved a site plan that has parking in that location. But it has to be that legitimate off-street parking that's part of that.
Oh, okay. Is that, is that in the ordinance that it has to be in designated off-street parking?
Well, occupying off-street parking areas not required for the principal use.
Okay, okay. That
Approved.
Yes, that kind of covers the set.
Okay, so, so if cabinet insurance wanted to have a food truck in their parking lot?
As long as they've got enough parking based on the ordinance and this takes up
They wouldn't need to come get a permit?
If they, all they need to do is come get a permit.
They, they would not, but the food truck
Food truck
Okay.
So have, and they'd have, also have to have permission from cabinet.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I'm just picking because of the office. Yeah, well, yeah, 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 sure. Yeah. No, I'm just picking because it's off the service. So in order to get a permit, the person just needs to come, hold it, take to get a permit.
Oh. I presume twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours?
Period of time.
Yeah.
Can possibly happen on a lock-in basis.
But if I have a, a one-year license. Do I need to come back every time I want to be in, on private property or not?
Not, not as it relates to private property. And not as a, like property either. You can park it in any place that is a legitimate approved place for public or private.
I'm a little confused. So I need a little more explanation. Why are we putting this in all these? So.
So it's a permitted use.
Cause it's not permitted currently.
Currently, it's not a permitted use. And, and in order to be a permitted.
Even if I, even if I had a food truck and a yearly license, technically I'm not supposed to. Like go to cabinet insurance and sell pizza.
Yep, right now it's a temporary use, just like we just approved.
So I would have to do the process.
Yeah.
I got, okay. No, I know I'm on the same.
And one of the amendments is getting rid of that.
Yeah.
Temporary use.
Right.
So if I go and get a food truck and then go and get my annual food truck permit.
Yes.
And I can park it, drive and park it in the same place for the whole year or can I move it? I can move it to any legitimate.
Any legitimate spot, yes.
Oh, that wasn't clear. I mean, maybe it is. I just, I didn't occur to me. Okay. Oh, okay. So it's not site specific?
Correct.
Okay.
That wouldn't be, wouldn't quite be fair to a mobile business to be site specific. You know.
Of course, if I went and got a permit that's good for three days, I'm going to be here for three days and go sell food for three days.
But if you have a, a one-year license, you want to be able to go to all these places.
Yep. Is, do we envision a limit on the number of these that would be issued?
No.
The market.
Have the problem before we worry.
Okay, okay. The market will determine that, Mike.
So far, we've issued one.
Way too far ahead.
Yeah, one, one daily permit so far.
One step at a time.
Just checking, just checking. By the way. I know. That's right. And wood, oh, yeah.
You're going to have three, three trucks on your talk.
Um, this is a proposed change to the ordinance. To the zoning ordinance, which would be anything we would do with, that would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission. Um, was this just here for discussion tonight or was this, actually have we noticed it? So, noticed, okay. So if we chose to adopt this, it would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission.
I move to adopt as presented.
Public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular matter? Thank you. Anybody online? Hi Lynn, hi Mary. Okay, hearing no public comment on this, we will close the public hearing portion of this matter. Uh, again, any discussion commissioners? Hearing none? Mary, did you want to say something? We see you now.
No.
Just checking in, okay. I have a question. Gordon?
City Commission, we got to read this twice, right?
Correct.
Is there, is there, is there a concern that we need to, oh, okay, okay. Just checking, just checking. Okay, okay. Roll call vote.
Well, I didn't, I'll support the motion.
I'm sorry, I thought we already had a motion.
We did, but I didn't, nobody supported it because you asked for public comments.
Okay.
I supported.
Thank you, okay. Go ahead. Now we're ready.
Cotton?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jacobit?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Watson?
Support.
Thank you all. Discussion on sidewalk cafe ordinance. Um. Yes, I'm going to ask, uh, Jeremiah to give a little background on this.
So in two thousand nineteen, when I first started in this position, David had drafted the sidewalk ordinance that, um. Then city administrator Bird wanted pass. Um, after speaking with DDA and the city commission at that time, they wanted. Numbers on the, what it's going to reduce the sidewalk to be and the numbers that they, that we came to agreement was, um, six feet from the curb with a three and a half foot from any obstruction. Or if you read the beginning, it says, um, it will not reduce any sidewalk alley or passageway width to less than six feet. So there's a conflict here. Um, so what I'm requesting is we initiate the ordinance amendment to, um, whatever we decide a. Size should be, but it can't say that it can't be six, but then also say. Three and a half, if that. Makes sense.
No, I, I, and I'm still.
It's, it's a conflict.
We, we, I'd like to point out that we didn't write this, because, you know, I don't think we even passed.
So, well, I have to say that I'm happy to see this though, because my wife and I walk downtown with our strollers all the time and there are numerous spots that we cannot. Navigate safely on the sidewalk. Due to obstructions from sidewalk cafes.
So I, I would like to change it to four foot, you know, um, just in general.
Can I measure my double stroller and get back to you? So. It's, this is a. No, four feet should be fine.
This is just for discussion, um, but the four feet, I believe would be ADA, um, requirements, so.
I, if, if I was to take away number one of the six feet and then change the three and a half to four, I think that would, would fix the issue.
So do we currently have several establishments where. There, they would be violating the ordinance if we changed it, right?
They would not, they would actually be in more compliance right now. Um, because of COVID, quite a few of these that came in are not in compliance is the way that this conflicts with itself.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that their fencing might be six feet from the curb, so.
But it may be two feet from the light post.
This, this is, this is, yeah, this is my enclosed space. It's six feet from the curb, but it's three, two or three feet from the light post there. And therein lies the problem, right?
No, we don't.
How do you get around the light?
We don't have anyone with that issue. Everyone that I've measured has been with, you know, all of them pretty much are at four foot. The issue is that it says it won't reduce any passageway to six feet and that conflicts with the three and a half. So then if you're at three and a half, you're no longer six.
Number one. Yeah, number. So he, yeah, so.
So the one, the light post to the fence, it's four feet. I believe that was actually five foot.
No way.
It, it's, we measured it. It's, it was moved, it's five feet at this point.
That's why it goes on an angle. Cause there's one of them right there that, that. The stroller does not fit.
Can you get?
I'll have to check.
Or, or walk down here.
It's, it's not up for action, so.
Yeah, no, I'll ever, I mean, we'll do it again, we'll do it again this weekend.
Yeah, let's check on that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
That just surprises me.
We may need to fiddle with the number, but the concept is reasonable.
But the key here is to be ADA compliant, right?
Right.
So if we're at four feet, then we would be ADA.
If, if that's the ADA compliance, it is, and the stroller is just too wide, that's fine. I'd rather be ADA compliant than my stroller compliant. I'll tell her, I'm not buying another stroller, but I've already bought enough of those.
So what, would you not call for a public hearing on this?
Uh, if you wanted to initiate, uh, an amendment to this section to, to bring, uh. That section in harmony, uh, then we can do some measurements, bring back proposed language and have a public hearing at, uh, future meeting.
Actually, while we're on this subject though, as you guys know, we've been having issues with being in compliance with state liquor control for ours at Rice and Barley because. We need a letter from the city stating that we're allowed to do this and that's.
To do, to do what?
To have alcohol served outside.
Oh.
And, uh, as of right now, it doesn't seem like the city is able to or wants to, or I don't.
I can feel it.
Yeah.
I can write a letter.
But would it maybe be good to? Put something in here to eliminate that in the future, say, if you guys were to move on and the next people in your position, like if this were to come up again, just because, because it was kind of, uh, it was. It kind of dragged the process back a little bit and we were kind of making our agent mad. So, uh, just a thought as somebody on the receiving end of this. Situation.
Wouldn't you still have to provide something to the state, even if.
Oh, they were asking.
Was written in the document?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah. Would it be good to maybe have a? Uniform kind of process for that or a form to fill out or something?
Well, I think.
Liquor control?
Sorry, uh, I think the intent when this was established was to have a, a sort of a permit for it, but it also doesn't say that. Right? And if, if you read it, it, it's sort of permanent once it's approved. You know, and so we may want to look at what the process is. Is it an annual permit? The, the reason this was, I wasn't here at the time, but I believe the reason this was. Uh, adopted and then tweaked in the adoption process was that certain businesses were not taking their cafe down at all.
Right.
And, and the purpose of the amendments was to add. Of the language that made it seasonal. Which is C. But it didn't really ever provide for any language to grant seasonal permits.
I thought, I thought there was a permit, what?
There is a form, but the ordinance itself does not say a permit is required.
Sidewalk cafe, if it permits, shall be issued. If the superintendent of public works, the city engineer and the chief of police determine the, the, determine the following.
But what is the, what is the term for the permit? What is?
Yeah.
The, is, and it's somewhere in there.
Says may issue revoked permits.
Yeah, that's it.
One time.
Two businesses.
So once you issue one.
Yeah.
There's no seasonality.
Well, maybe we need to do more with this than just stretch this one line.
If, if that's your intent, I, I, you know, it doesn't. Well, I, I don't think it's absolutely necessary to do them every year. It could, they can be permanent. As, as long as things don't change. You know.
You can permit it for seasonal use.
Correct. You, you can have the seasonal time period, but the next year you can come out and put it back up once you've got approval for that arrangement.
That's good. I mean, and we've already got, I mean, it already says it's, they need, they can operate from April to November, fifteen, like fifteen. And let's be honest, we're not going to have a mission. They've probably got as many as we're going to get. Yeah.
Well, we'll get some new business.
Every new business is coming in, we want to do it.
But can we go ahead and add something then about if, uh, if the business has a liquor license that, that extends to this, to the use of the sidewalk area?
Oh, I don't think that, that we have to necessarily say that. I don't think the MLCC is looking for that. They just want.
No, they want, they actually, they actually won't look at the ordinance at all, which is the biggest.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you want.
No, I wish it was just as simple as sending in our ordinance, but as Greg and Jeremiah.
They need to.
I'm sorry, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, it, it, basically the MLCC is looking for direct permission, which, I mean, if we're the only ones that have asked for this, then I would assume anybody else who's serving alcohol outside probably isn't in compliance with the MLCC.
I wrote two letters this year.
There you go. So, I mean, it is, it is a requirement of theirs and it's odd that we can't just use the ordinance, but for whatever reason.
What would you need? What would you need to make it easy?
Yeah. Like I said, maybe some kind of a form letter that they can just have made.
So you don't need anything, putting anything in here doesn't help you guys out.
No, no, I was just saying, since we're on the same subject, maybe, I don't know, just trying to streamline the process a little bit, since we're already talking about the subject and. It's just something we've had to deal with and the MLCC seems to be very finicky.
Well, in the, yes.
Like I said, I wish we could just take this ordinance and say, we're allowed, the city says, but they. Don't.
Okay, so our, our direction to staff is we're going to scratch item one and we're going to probably change item F to four feet.
And then also determine permanent length.
And determine, and come up with permitting length. And we'll look at that next month. But okay, folks?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we want that as a hearing or as a? No.
Oh, shall we set a public hearing for next month? Okay, um. What date is our meeting next month? Let me find my phone. The third September, oh, August, August.
So I get to September, yeah.
Yeah, August third, okay. We would entertain a motion to set a public hearing to consider this change in ordinance for our next regularly scheduled meeting, that being Tuesday, August third.
So move.
Support.
Taylor and Love, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Don't you need a roll call?
So I'm not sure, I'm not, not sure we had a.
No, in fact, that specifically mentioned in that new one.
All those bylaws, don't I have to go to the commission?
No.
No.
It's just us.
Oh, shoot.
He only can call.
Aye.
Okay. Um. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Is there anyone that wishes to address the planning commission on almost any topic? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So move.
For.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.